All right. Good evening. I would like to welcome you all to the May 23 meeting of the City of Clovis Planning Commission. Members of the public are encouraged to participate in the meeting by accessing and listening to the webcast on the city's website, providing written comments at the same website, or coming to the Planning Commission meeting in person. At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order. Commissioner Haber, can I get you to lead us in the flag salute?
Sure.
Okay, ready, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And Commission Secretary, if you could please call the roll.
Commissioner Bedstead?
Here.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Here.
Commissioner Aberg?
Here.
Commissioner Hingle is absent and Chair Entune is absent.
Thank you. And if I can entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes from April 18?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the March 28, 2024 minutes by Commissioner Hatcher and a second by Commissioner Aberg. Commissioner Hatcher? Commissioner Aberg?
Yes.
And Commissioner Bedstead?
I'm probably going to complicate things with this, but as I was not present in the April 18 meeting, I was planning to abstain. I'm not sure if that creates any challenges with the minutes being approved.
Dave or Matt?
I'd have to double check on that. My gut tells me that you could probably approve the meeting minutes with the majority of the quorum. But, um, let me get back to you on that if we can table that for the moment and I can get a firm answer.
Will do.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on then to any Commission Secretary comments.
No comments.
Thank you. And any comments from the Planning Commissioners? Seeing none, we'll move on to the public comment section. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on any matter within the Planning Commission's jurisdiction that is not listed on the agenda. In order for everyone to be heard, please limit your comments to three minutes or less, or 10 minutes per topic. Anyone wishing to be placed on the agenda for a specific topic should contact the Planning Division and submit correspondence at least 10 days before the desired date of appearance. At this time, I'll invite anyone who has any public comments up to the podium. Okay, seeing none, we'll move along. And at this time, we will open the public hearing. So first item on our public hearing agenda, item two, is CUP 2024 TAC 002. This is to consider approval adopting a Class 1 categorical exemption from further environmental review under SEQA and a request to approve a conditional use permit to allow operation of a banquet hall at 458 West Shaw Avenue, A&amp;A Tarzana Plaza LP owner, Blackpool LLC applicant. And I will ask Liz Salazar from staff to present.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. The project site is located at 458 West Shaw Avenue, which is on the southwest corner of Shaw and Peach Avenues in an existing tenant space that's outlined here in red. The site is Zoned C2 Community Commercial, which allows the use of a banquet hall subject to an approved CUP. The adjacent land uses include commercial to the north, east, and there's also apartments to the east, townhomes and single-family to the south, and an existing hotel to the west. The tenant space is approximately 10,200 square feet and was previously occupied by Chili Pot Restaurant and Mongolian Buffet Restaurant. The banquet hall will operate completely indoors seven days a week between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 12:00 a.m. It is anticipated to host up to 395 guests, subject to occupancy approval from the Building Division. Typical events will include weddings, seminars, conferences, and other private ceremonies. They will offer in-house and off-site catering and DJ services as part of their venue. And sale, service, or consumption of alcohol will be permitted on an event-by-event basis, subject to approval from the Police Department. The project does not propose any site or facade modifications other than new signage. And the project does not propose to increase any of the existing square footage. Therefore, the parking established for the commercial center was found to be sufficient for the proposed CUP. A condition of approval was recommended to prohibit any valet services for the banquet hall that would restrict or reserve any of the stalls within the center. Here are some images of the inside of the tenant. They did a tenant improvement to update to the banquet hall use. The project is consistent with the general plan policies and is located within the Shaw Avenue corridor plan, which encourages improvement of Shaw Avenue, including filling larger vacant commercial sites. Therefore, staff supports approval of the CUP, subject to the conditions of approval. And if I have here, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Liz. At this time, are there any clarifying questions from the Planning Commissioners, first up? All right, very good. So with the public hearing open, I would like to invite the applicant up to provide any comments or presentation.
Good evening, Commissioners and Planning Staff. I'd like to thank you for the presentation. And on behalf of the owners, we'll really appreciate the support and approval of the CUP. And I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah, my apologies. Could you please state your name and address for the record as well?
So sorry, my name is Rainu Vagwal, and I'm with SMS Services, and I am representing Blackpool LLC.
Thank you. From the Commission, any questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, thank you. At this time, I would like to invite anyone from the public who would like to speak in support of the project to the podium. Seeing none, any members of the public in opposition to the project? Again, seeing none. Okay, any final comments from the applicant? I think we heard from you, so seeing none. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to staff or the Commission for any final comments. All right, if none, then I'm ready to deliberate and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve CUP 2024-002.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hatcher and a second by Commissioner Aberg to approve a Class 1 categorical exemption from further environmental review under SEQA and CUP 2024-002 to allow operation of a banquet hall at 458 West Shaw Avenue. Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Aberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Bedstead?
Yes.
And Chair Entune and Commissioner Hingle are absent. The motion passes 302.
Thank you.
And just to clarify for the agenda minutes, it would just need to be a vote from a majority of the quorum. So two votes for approval would be able to adopt the minutes.
Excellent. Thank you for clarifying that for us. Um, I think we'll...I'm going to continue with the public hearing portion, and then we'll close out with the minutes before we adjourn. Okay, next up, we have item number three. This is to consider approval for general plan consistency findings for the proposed 2024-2025 community investment program. And from staff this evening, we have Fernando Capetti, Supervising Civil Engineer. And Fernando is joined here with some special guests that we hope he will introduce to us.
Good evening, Planning Commission. I'm Thad Avery. I'm the City Engineer for the City of Clovis. I am only up here to provide support to Fernando. I wanted to introduce him to you if you haven't already met him before. He's been in the position of Supervising Civil Engineer for the Capital Improvement Program for almost 12 months now. This is his first presentation of the budget, so I just wanted to present him to you if you haven't met him before.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Thad. Good evening, Planning Commission. I'm Fernando Capetti. And I'm...tonight I am here to present to you the proposed 2024-25 Community Investment Program Budget, inclusive of the five-year Community Investment Program. Section 64401...sorry, 65401 of the Government Code Calls for Planning Commission's Review and Consideration of the Annual Capital Improvement Program. The City of Clovis referred to its capital improvement program as a community investment program. The purpose of this provision is to have the Planning Commission review the community investment program and make a specific finding that it is in conformance with the general plan and relevant specific plans. The Clovis City Council can then proceed with adoption of the budget. Staff is recommending the adoption of the resolution, finding the proposed 24-25 Communities Investment Program. It's consistent with the general plan and relevant specific plans of the City of Clovis. The proposed Community Investment Program Budget is a 60-page document attached to the report submitted to the Planning Commission. The projects that are proposed in the program have been identified in consultation with and support from various city department heads, their representatives, and other applicable staff. This collaborative process has assisted in forming a program that provides a section... sorry, a selection of specific projects that are necessary for public service, utility, and/or safety purposes, and are consistent with city goals. Shown on this slide, you see a brief overview of the Community Investment Program. And this 24-25 CAP budget is a total of $53,707,600. On this chart, you can see how the capital projects are distributed in the program areas like government, sewer, parks, street, community sanitation, and community development. Various project components consist of design, right-of-way acquisitions, and/or construction. In 2024-25, the budget is comprised with...comprised of 44 projects in total. On this slide, we can see the majority of the street projects are from federal and state grants. In 2024-25, the budget has around $9.6 million in federal grants and $10.2 million from regional Measure C funding for a specific project. It also shows that the gas tax, including the SV1, has a total of $3.7 million. And Measure C passed through as approximately $4.3 million if we add up all those numbers. And wanted to bring this up, which is this past year, we have seen an upward trend in construction costs, primarily due to inflation, which is reflecting the material costs and labor costs. So we do not know when this trend will end, but it may affect the delivery of our projects. So on this next slide, I'm showing some of the noteworthy projects for this coming fiscal year. And it comprises an assortment of street improvement projects shown on this, some of the streets that we have, and which also includes our annual Cape and Slurry Seals, which helps the...it provides preventive maintenance for approximately 20 miles of road...sorry, of local streets. It also shows Phase 2 of Show Avenue Widening Project, which is between the Wolf and Leonard Avenue. It shows Handon Avenue between...it's a widening, I'm sorry, between Temperance and the Wolf, the roundabout, the intersection of the Wolf and Always Mountain Parkway, and traffic at the intersection of Nice and Armstrong Avenue. Not working. This is it? Oh, there you go. Perfect. Thank you. So on this slide, we're showing...is this an update from this past year, some of the noteworthy projects? Thank you. And so on the left, you can see it's a picture of the elevation of the Fire Station 2, which is under construction, and it's close to being done. Estimated date is July, August this year. On the center, you see a picture with a drone, I imagine, of Show Avenue Widening, Phase 1 of Show Avenue Widening between Leonard and McCall Avenues. This project is already open to through traffic, but it has still some components that are pending, so we cannot call it complete yet. And on the right side, you see Village Green Park, which is almost done. We're anticipating to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony this mid-July this year. And this last slide, it shows a project that was completed last year, which is Lammer Square, including the senior center and the transit center buildings. And those were completed November, December last year, and it's been open for business since then. So this concludes my presentation, and I'm here available for any questions.
Thank you, Fernando. Any comments, Commission? Any questions? All right, seeing none, we will open the public hearing on this matter. Being as the city is the applicant here, I don't think we have any other presentations to receive. I'll invite the public, anyone who wishes to speak in support, please step up here. And not seeing any, I'll ask for anyone who is here to speak in opposition to do the same. And not seeing any of those, anything more, Fernando, before we deliberate and close the public?
If you guys allow me, I want to thank my family for coming tonight. My daughters Sophia, Maya, and Tiago, who's right there, and my wife, Carla. Thank you both. Thank you very much for coming. And thank you for your patience.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thanks for attending to support. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and I will bring it to the Commission to deliberate and make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the general plan consistency finding for the proposed 2024-25 Community Investment Program.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Hatcher, Commissioner by...I mean, excuse me, a second by Commissioner Aberg to approve the general plan consistency finding for the proposed 2024-2025 Community Investment Program. Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Aberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Bedstead?
Yes.
And Chair Entune and Commissioner Hingle are both absent. The motion passes 302.
Thank you. All right, let's move on then to item number four. So item number four is considered items associated with modifications to the existing density ranges for multi-family housing in the General Plan and Development Code. City of Clovis is the applicant, and we are here to consider approval of GPA 2024 TAC 002, a resolution recommending City Council's consideration of an addendum to the city's general plan EIR and approval of a modification to the description of the MH, or medium-high-density residential land use designation, to increase the maximum density from 15 to 20 dwelling units per acre, and a modification to the age... units per acre, and a modification to the H or high-density residential land use designation to increase the minimum density from 15.1 to 20.1 dwelling units per acre. And at this time, I would like to have Mr. Merchant. Did I miss item two? I apologize. Let me read item B here. The second item is to consider approval of a resolution OA 2024 TAC 001, recommending city council's consideration of an addendum to the city's general plan EIR, and approval of an ordinance amendment modifying the description of the R2 Medium Density Residential Zone District to include the maximum density from 15 to 20 dwelling units per acre, and modifying the R3 Multifamily Residential High Density Zone District to increase the minimum density from 15.1 to 20.1 dwelling units per acre, and amending definitions relating to major street development fees. And now, staff, Mr. Merchant presenting.
Thank you for bearing through what's become a little bit of an awkward presentation with the echo. I'm tempted to make a joke. I can't figure out what the wording would be about liking the sound of your own voice, but this is taking it to extremes, but I couldn't quite figure out how that joke should be worded, so that's as far as it's going to go. Eric, I think you would have stopped us at this point, if there was some hope to avoid the scenario, so we'll just keep going. Okay, we're going to try to beat it to the finish line here. The proposed project this evening is another sort of housing-related project. This one stems as a result of the judgment from the Martinez versus City of Clovis case. That judgment requires specifically the city to increase the minimum density in the R3 Zone District from its current minimum of 15 units up to 20 units per acre. We're at the same time proposing to increase the maximum density of the R2 Zone District from 15 to 20 units per acre, so that there's not a gap between the R2 and the R3 zoning, and I'll show you what that looks like here in a second. We are also proposing to modify the corresponding general plan designations so that they match the zoning modifications that we're proposing. There are no changes proposed to any land use designations of any individual parcels, so this is all sort of text amendments, no land use designations of parcels are changing. As the commissioners have come to understand, and can probably describe this as well as staff can at this point, residential density ranges are established through general plan designations and zone districts. You know, we have five general plan designations from low up to very high. Those correspond to five separate zoning districts from R1 up to R4. The zoning districts are in a stair-stepping fashion, with the top end of one zoning district generally becoming the bottom end of the next zone district. The one variation from that is you can see the highest designations of R3 and R4. There's a little bit of overlap between the top of R3 and the bottom of O4. You may recall that that was because in the fall of last year, we amended the R3 designation to better correspond to our RENA inventory requirements, and that's where that overlap came into play. The Martinez judgment specifically requires the city to increase the minimum density of the high and R3 zoning, so I'm going to call that from now on HR3 from 15 to 20 dwelling units per acre. So if you read the settlement, which became the judgment, it specifically just says, "Change the R3 from 15 to 20 units per acre." So these other things that we're doing are to help make that work. So you can see, this is what that looks like when we change the minimum of R3 from 15 to 20. The result is that we have a gap now between the top of R2 and the bottom of R3. We try not to create a gap, because it prohibits seeing projects develop at that density of 15 to 20. If we did this without making any other changes, kind of that sweet spot where we've seen projects go at 15, 16, 18 units per acre, there wouldn't be an implementing zoning and general plan designation for that. So the result is that we want to avoid and fill that gap by increase the maximum density of the MH R2 designation, so that it fills the gap. So now we're back to the stair-step without any gaps. It's a little bit funky, if you will, in that the R2 density range is pretty big, and the R3 density range is pretty small, but those still work. There continues to be opportunities to develop at all densities. Probably this will change as the city's next general plan update becomes...ultimately gets adopted in, let's say, two and a half, three years. We're optimistic about that, Levley and I are. The whole kind of configuration of the way that we look at zoning may very well change with our next general plan. Wanted to give you a sense of what the R2 and R3 properties look like in the city. This is a map showing all of the existing R2 properties. These are R2 properties, only about six and a half acres of that one site, and Loma Vista is undeveloped, everything else is pretty well reached its finish line. North of Shepherd and Heritage Grove Urban Center, there's some newly zoned acreage that was recently annexed into the city. Combined, there is about 65 acres of property in Heritage Grove with the R2 zoning. R3 is similar, it's a little more clustered on the southeast side of 168, but it's distributed pretty well throughout the city. The R3 properties include a handful of undeveloped properties in the Loma Vista area. North of Shepherd, there's also some newly zoned and annexed properties, and together there's about 100 acres of R3 zoning. Again, R3, there would be no increase in zoning, it would just be an increase in a minimum. We prepared an addendum to the general plan EIR to evaluate the environmental effects of the project. The addendum concludes that there are no substantial changes proposed which would require major revisions to the general plan. There are no substantial changes which would occur with respect to the circumstances under which the project is undertaken, which require major revisions to the general plan. And there's no new information of substantial importance that shows any of the following, including new significant effects, more severe significant effects, newly feasible mitigation measures, or new mitigation measures or alternatives that would reduce significant effects. So based on those determinations, the addendum is the appropriate environmental document and if further evaluation is required. In summary, the judgment in the Martinez case requires the city to increase the minimum density for the R3 Zone District. The reconfiguration of the R2 density will avoid creating a gap. Without the modification of the R2 Zone District, there would be no implementing zone for projects between 15 and 20 units per acre. This proposal maintains consistency between the density ranges established in the general plan and those in the zoning. And finally, an addendum to the general plan EIR confirms that none of the conditions requiring additional analysis have occurred, and we're done then with CEQA on this project. This staff recommendation is to, after considering the addendum to the general plan EIR, adopt resolutions recommending that the council approve both the development code and general plan amendments as presented. Happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for staff? I have just one then. So if...obviously, if this gets approved tonight, it goes to city council for their review. It would go into effect immediately, so any of the properties zoned would have this, I guess particularly the wide range of 7.1 on up to the new designation to fill that gap.
For the R2 district and its corresponding MH general plan designation, the new density range would be 7 to 20, and that would go into effect 30 days after the second reading of the ordinance. I don't believe there's any provision here for an emergency ordinance to be adopted.
But the developers will still be able to, on their own accord, work within that range, so if they want to be at the low end or the high end, or somewhere in between, they'll have that latitude.
That's correct.
And will be evaluating those different track maps and ensuring compatibility with surrounding areas, et cetera.
Correct.
Very good. No other questions? So at this time, I will open the public hearing and invite anyone up who would like to speak in support of the project. Seeing none, I will invite anyone up who would like to speak in opposition. And again, seeing none. I will bring it back. Any final comments from staff?
No, thank you.
Thank you. And so at this time, we will close the public hearing and discuss here as a commission, or entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to approve GPA 2024-002.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Hatcher, a second by Commissioner Abear, recommending that the city council consider an addendum to the city's general plan EIR, and approval of a modification to the description of the medium-high-density residential land use designation to increase the maximum density from 15 to 20 dwelling units per acre, and a modification to the high-density residential land use designation to increase the minimum density from 15.1 to 20.1 dwelling units per acre. Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Abear?
Yes.
Commissioner Bedstead?
Yes.
Motion passes with a vote 302.
And I will make a motion to approve OA 2024-001.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hatcher, a second by Commissioner Abear, recommending that the city council consider an addendum to the city's general plan EIR, and approval of an ordinance amendment modifying the description of the R2 Medium High Density Residential Zone District to increase the maximum density from 15.1 to 20 dwelling units per acre, and modifying the R3 Multifamily Residential High Density Zone District to increase the minimum density from 15.1 to 20.1 dwelling units per acre, and amending the definitions relating to major street development fees. Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Abear?
Yes.
Commissioner Bedstead?
Yes.
And both Chair Antuna and Commissioner Hinkle are absent. The motion passes with a 302 vote.
And staff, I have a question. When we make a motion, do you want us to go ahead and read all of that? Okay.
Okay, that concludes the public hearing portion. We did table the approval of the April 18 meeting minutes earlier. I'm thinking just to formalize it, maybe we'll ask the motion to be remade, call the vote again, so if I can get a motion to approve the minutes for April 18.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Commissioner Hatcher and a second by Commissioner Abear to approve the March 2024 minutes. Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Abear?
Yes.
Commissioner Bedstead?
Just to clarify, you said March, April?
Oh, excuse me, April. It says March on my piece of paper.
All right, so I'll make sure we're accurate here.
Thank you so much for that.
So...
We have...I'll just repeat that. We have a motion by Commissioner Hatcher, a second by Commissioner Abear, to approve the April 28...what is it? April 18, 2024 minutes. And Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Abear?
Yes.
And Commissioner Bedstead?
And I will abstain, as I was not present for that meeting. Thank you.
The motion passes 203.
Okay, at this time, having no other items, I will adjourn the meeting at 6:38. What did I aim to do? Already got them. Already got them. From the commission secretary. Already got the commission. That is the administrative items, right?
I don't know, because it's on there, it's like another thing, but like, to me, if you get it at the beginning, I don't know why they would do it.